Is Kim with us?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so this is Friday, the twelfth of May, and it is eleven oh three. And present, we have Landry Eckberg, Maney, Yazdani, Davis, and Regan. That's from Mariana. Okay, so we're all present. First order of business is approval of minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have any corrections?
I've got a couple of pedantic things. Under staff appreciation, sentence starts out, staff appreciation board was very popular. I think you mean week instead of board?
Uh huh.
That make sense?
Yep, okay.
And then, under Personnel Board, the next line, next to the bottom line in the first paragraph, seem to be missing a word. One substantive update will include specified children's services in Assistant Director and update new roles. Isn't, is there a word that should be in there somewhere?
Physician, maybe? Assistant Director, physician?
That's good, Kim. Yeah.
And then similarly, the next last paragraph on the, on the first page, that's Public Library Construction Letter on the second line down. Think we might be missing a word again. It says Ryan and trustee Landry, after attending this, we need some word after Landry.
I think we just presented it at the meeting, right?
Presented?
Oh, you're saying they signed the contract, so.
It wasn't really signing a contract. It was just a letter of intent.
Okay, well, I mean, it says, the sentence says, sign the letter of intent, so. I think you could put a comma.
Signed, we all had to sign it after the meeting, right? So like, we did kind of, at the Select Board, what Marguerite and I did was kind of jointly just present what the letter of intent was.
I think to correct that sentence, put a comma after Landry and purple. Because there's your verb, signed.
Yeah, that works.
Oh, yeah. Good point. Yeah, that's right, Jane. Good.
That's a good fix.
Okay, anything else? No? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I motion to approve as amended, or whoever else wants to motion.
Voices came in there. I think, is one.
Go ahead, Jane.
I say so, so moved.
Okay, Jane will move, and Amy, you want a second?
I second.
All right, there we are. And all in favor, Landry, I, Davis?
I.
Eckberg?
I.
Regan?
I.
Yazdani?
I.
And Maney.
I wasn't there, so I abstain.
Staying, okay, all right. There we are. All right, shall we move on to the Director's Report?
Sure. Um. I included the special fund balance. We got that from the accountant, so that is included in your packet. Um, yeah, I guess, I guess I should, is there any questions about that?
Even that's the ledger history detail with payables?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the ledger history detail, and it's on, it includes payable information, but it's like the LSTA grant, what we've spent so far. So you can kind of see our progress on spending the grant funds. You know, we've made, we're more than, we're pretty much three, two-thirds of the way there, which is the correct time around this year that we would want to be, because we have to conclude spending in end of September. Um, then it just gives you the updated balances on donations, accounts, state aid, and the Mary Faye Fund. I will ask formally next month if we have to use the Mary Faye Fund for any book purchasing beyond where we're at, but we can do expense report after this. We, we got a couple of big bills coming for books. We just got a five hundred and fifty dollar audiobook bill that wasn't included in the payable, because I got it within the last day. So the staff are spending, I've spending some money on materials, so we're getting there.
Okay, are we gonna have any surplus cash left over?
We definitely will in salaries. We'll have at least the equivalent of one full payroll, it looks like. If I did kind of a projection, and that was, it was like a little over seventeen thousand. We, we pay, I think, like sixteen per payroll right now, sixteen and some change, so.
Right. Any questions?
We can do expense separately, but there, there's a couple of things that I will try to go through Directors really quick. So the DPW stuff is pretty self-explanatory. There was one piece that wasn't put in, because this happened after I wrote the report, which was, I've sent pictures of the ivy that is growing on the front of the building to DPW and asked them to open a ticket for that as well. Generally, what they have to do is kill the ivy at its source, and then they, it dies over time, and then they have to remove it. It's a small section of ivy, but it's growing on the front of the building where we just did a big facade restoration project. So we don't want the ivy to damage any of the restoration work we just did. The DPW is aware of this. They will try to address it as quickly as they can. Thank you, Marguerite, for bringing that to my attention. It was in, it started, like spraying up really quickly, and it was in a corner of the building I did not see, so.
We just paid a lot of money to get the ivy damage off, right? I think the roots are still probably pretty active under the ground, so this may be an ongoing thing.
Um, I think you guys saw the note from Mr. Warren from the Southborough Public Accessibility Committee on visibility in the parking lot. So I have initially also addressed this with DPW. We are probably going to wait for the new superintendent to start. We are meeting ADA compliance with the parking lot, but as you can see from the Director's Report, there was already some issues that I wanted to address, including the parking lot that is still filled with excess materials from the archaeological dig last year, and there's several potholes which are becoming problematic. I would say when you first enter on the far end of the parking lot. Um, Mr. Warren clarified when I spoke with him, he is not looking for lighting, per se. I, I believe the discussion was not about lighting in the S-PAC meeting. It was actually about painting the parking lot in a particular way that would help increase visibility. We also might explore, just because, you know, these conversations have been dynamic, and we're talking about what can be done. Um, there are right now cones on the end of the parking lot that have reflectors, because they're doing the sidewalk construction just off the side of the parking lot. They're extending it to the park. So, or the future park that's, that's going to border the library. So we may look at whether or not we could put reflectors in addition to any painting that could be done. I can't give you an update on this. A lot of this is going to be driven by DPW. And I know the superintendent has, is, has a backlog of, of things that he's going to have to work on when he starts in July. So hopefully, we'll get this done before the end of the year, um, time permitting. Working with IT and replacing the computers, that is also pretty self-explanatory. We're going to do them pretty much one at a time, so that'll take a little bit of time to get all those done. The staff room computer is so old and slow, it's pretty much inoperable. So we wanted to replace the computer that essentially is not working at all first. And then I think we're going to hit the CIRC computers one at a time, and then do my office last. So that's kind of the general timeframe, but Jason is trying to do end of year spending too. We normally budget for about two and a half computers. I know that sounds weird, but Jason thinks that he can fund for out of the budget this year because of the requests that have come in. So, you know, I, I'm not holding him to that. We're going to see what money is left, and then what we can replace. He's, he's on the hook for two. That's what I, I told him, so. Um, programming stuff is pretty, I think, self-explanatory. The one thing that I did want to mention, sorry, there's like things I'm mentioning that didn't make the report, but a lot of this stuff has been set up, I think, after, is on June third, we're working with the Southborough Democratic Caucus. They traditionally have done an event at the library where they do, I think, sort of this live voting type of, I don't, I don't exactly know how it works, but Kelly Roney would be able to tell, tell you more, because he's the coordinator this year. We've worked with Rose Morrow in the past. We've worked with Mr. Frank. He was one of the people. So there's been different people who are involved in the group. They essentially just need a public space in order to do the voting. Um, and we're, they've asked if they could use the library again. They haven't done it in person in a number of years. I told them that it was okay. If a Republican group, for the record, would like to do the same thing, we will also offer a space to them, but they have never asked, so.
As long as equal time is offered, we're okay.
So we're throwing that out there for, for if anybody involved in a Southborough Republican group wants to do an event here too, that is okay, but this is mainly because it has to be done in a public setting, and members of the public are invited. So they're going to be upstairs on the main floor on a Saturday. They worked around the existing library schedule, so we were very happy to work with them on that. Uh, Narcan training, if you guys haven't done it, the, the May thirtieth one is the last one. I can also confirm for you that the DEI trainings that we talked about last month with the townwide trainings, we talked about closing the library for those. The first one is, it is going to be at the library, so I can confirm that.
All right, Ryan, what's DEI?
So it's diversity, equity, and inclusion. So the training is geared towards increasing the skills for staff in those particular areas. So, um, members of the, the town departments are going to be invited to come to the library. We would also like to thank, I believe it's the Select Board are providing pastries, I believe. It's either them or the Personnel Board, so whoever's giving us pastries for the employees, we thank you. Um.
Ryan, were you implying that, that we as trustees should be taking the Narcan training?
I'm not implying it. I'm just letting you know that it's publicly available, and it's, it's to the members of the public. Some, I think, staff are going to be doing it. I'm going to be doing the May thirtieth session. I believe Amy Yazdani actually did already take one of the Narcan trainings, so she might be able to speak to that a little bit more. I, I will just say, I was familiar with what Narcan was, and I, I can't pronounce the actual n- naloxacal, what, what, I'm saying it wrong, but you know what I'm talking about.
Who knows Narcan?
Yeah, Narcan for sure, but if, um, uh, I think Amy found it valuable. I found it valuable. I hadn't, and it's only a thirty-minute session. And then at the end, they actually give you a small Narcan kit. So we've added a Narcan kit to our AED unit, which is the automatic defibrillator that we have. So, um, yeah, it's not a bad thing to, to do, David, if you have the time, but don't, don't at all feel obligated to do it. It's only if you want to.
No, I, 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 I take your suggestion, and I assume you would recommend it for us?
Yeah, it's, it's quick, and I want, for Kim, it says eighteen and older, but they welcome younger people. Um, Nia did it and found it surprisingly quite interesting, and my brother did too. Um, it's quick. You get, everybody gets the first aid kit that you can have with you. They explain how Narcan works by replacing opioids on the receptors. So even if all of us use Narcan right now, if you're not using opiates, you would see no change. So it's a very safe thing to do, not that I'm suggesting that, but, um, you know, it's one, and, and you really can't do it wrong. You put it in somebody's nose and squeeze, but they give you a little more information. And I had spoken with the Board of Health just to ask about putting it in the AED, because they were talking about waiting for stickers or boxes, and I'm like, can't we just do it now, like now? Um, and Ryan has obviously been proactive on that too. And if you use them, the state of Massachusetts, you just go into the Board of Health, say, I use these, and they will replace them for you, because they're trying to keep account of, you know, when they're being used and how and where. But it's really good thing to know and to do. Unfortunately, it's too prevalent right now. And the tip she gives you, which I didn't know, is you can't keep them in your car, which is kind of a pain, but it'll change their effectiveness. But if you have the time, it's quick, and I don't even think it's thirty minutes, but, um, it's really good information. And the Health, Board of Health people are engaging and will answer your questions and whatnot, so.
You've sold me. Thank you.
When is it? So that, it is on a Tuesday, May thirtieth, and it is at four o'clock, so that I realize that will not fit for everybody's schedule with work. Um, but if you are, I, I think the Board of Health is going to try to set up subsequent trainings, but we were like maxed out on our first one, and I think we got a fair amount of people for the second session, but we have noticed attendance is kind of tapering off. So coming helps us with the attendance factor, I'll just say. And if people keep coming to them, the Board of Health will still coordinate doing them with us. If we're finding that people aren't coming to them, then they won't happen anymore. So I, I think we might take the summer off, but if, if you can come to this upcoming one, that might help us with maintaining them in the fall. Does that make sense? And then also, the, the Southborough Rec does say for ages eighteen and up, but we have checked, because we had a page inquiry as to whether or not they could go. And, and younger high school age students can go to this, so they can attend after school, and they will get a Narcan kit if they do the training, but they, they go over everything that the, the students know. So not for small, small children, but I think somebody in high school, they said it was okay. So, um, we checked on that because we had a request, so. That, I'm also throwing that out there. If you have high school age, peoples who are interested or at home, and they want to attend, that's okay. We check.
Yeah, it's actually a perfect age group to be attending these things. And actually, the Board of Health said they don't know why eighteen's on there, so just, they welcomed Nia showing up, so, you know, being a younger person, so Kim and other people with younger kids who are in high school, if you want to take them, it's really, it's not, and it's not like scary. It's nothing they don't know. They're not, it's not a terrorizing type of thing. It's just basic, good information.
Yeah, I'm actually making a note. I'll talk to Rec about decreasing the age restriction on the registration.
Yeah, it's a really good thing for, it used to be CPR, everybody had to know. Now it's adding this as well.
That is also, I was just gonna say, available through the Rec Department this month, I think. My, Nia's doing it, and my brother are doing it, so they're certified, but they're offering it through Rec if anybody isn't CPR, AED, and first aid certified. They're offering it at Rec, I think, May something. Um, but just so you know, you go through the Rec Department's website and register. I can tell you the exact date in a second, I think. Yes, May twenty-third, from six to eight on thirty-two Cordova, which I believe is the safe, public safety.
Did you say the twenty-third?
Yes. You have to register ahead on the Rec Department website.
Is that no?
There's a fee because you get your card, but it's, you know, it's the same price that you do it everywhere.
It's a small fee, right? I don't, I don't think it's really big.
It's what they charge if you do it any, through the heart, you know, Heart Association through, I, because I've done it for Girl Scouts through all different organizations, and it's pretty much the same price everywhere. They're not up, upcharging or anything.
Um, just to let you know, there, they did, I did talk to Karen, right, Amy? I believe her name is, who coordinates the blood drives?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So Karen let me know that the blood drive can come back on Thursday, July sixth. Generally, because that's the week we're not, we don't do a lot of events, because it's just after the Fourth of July weekend. Um, that ends up being a good day for us. There's a Lego Day that day, like a drop in Lego Day, but we can do both concurrently. So the next mobile blood drive will be July sixth. We'd like to continue though.
Nice that we can host that.
Yeah, yeah.
And an added bonus, the FDA finally removed the, uh, preclusion of gay and bisexual men from donating, so maybe we'll get some more people. Only took decades.
Um. Also, I just, I'm, I'm going to International Night at Algonquin tonight. It just coincided with the meeting. That is something we get invited to generally every year. Um, they didn't do it in person for a number of years, so it's nice that we're still on their list, and we got asked. Um, you know, if anybody, I think I might be going by myself. I asked part-time staff or volunteers, and no one was interested. So if anybody wants to drop by and help me set up tonight, you can get back to me one-on-one. I won't put you on the spot today, but I wouldn't hate some help. I'll say that. So, the, the other thing, just because we're about to go into the native plant garden, I have two kind of updates. So the, the native plant one is in there. There was a request also from Carl Guyer from the Southborough Rotary Club. Um, the Trotty or Talent Show is going to be next week. In the past, the library has been a venue where people can purchase tickets if they can't get to the school. Um, he only dropped off ten of the tickets. We only have a week that we could do it, but we also did just pass a solicitation policy last year. I think we specifically talked about the Rotary tickets. So I was wondering if it's okay, I will coordinate this with staff, but do I have your permission to sell the tickets at the library?
You have mine. Do we need to vote?
I don't, I, I'm happy to get, just talk it out and see if anybody has any objections. To me, this is something, we only have ever sold, I think, a total of five or six tickets in any year. It's a very sort of, um, not popular service, but it has helped, I think, one or two families in the past that just couldn't get the tickets any other way.
So we support the Rotary, and the Rotary supports us, so I don't see any problem with the tickets, but I'm open to anybody else's thoughts on that.
My only concern would be, like, then what happens when somebody else comes and wants us to sell their tickets?
I tell them that I, I, I tell them that we have a solicitation policy, and then I would have to go to the Library Board of Trustees and ask them if it's okay, which is what I'm doing right now. Which is what I told Mr. Guyer, when he called me and then stopped by today, because they have a week to sell them.
Anybody got a problem? We, we, they're sort of grandfathered too, in a weird way, so. Anybody got a problem with us holding ten tickets for sale?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine also.
I have no problem with it.
But I, I respect Amy's point that this would set a precedent. And my next thing that I'm going to go into is another request to sell something at the library. So you, when it rains, it pours, everyone. Um, so we have rescheduled the Earth Day Concert and the Native Plant um, tour, garden tour, um, from the initial Earth Day events. If you remember, it was scheduled on a Sunday. It got rained out. We rescheduled it a week later on a Saturday. That got rained out, so now we're trying again. It's, it's scheduled for Sunday, May twenty-first. Um, there have been people that Mrs. Gillespie works with who are interested in selling some low-cost native plants. So I know there's specifically milkweed plants. I think there might be a few others, if they can coordinate that. These would be, I think, only a few dollars for people who are interested. It's not going to be, um, an obligation. People can still attend the events and enjoy them. This would just be an added option for the program.
Inside or, inside or outside?
It's going to be outside, and I would also just say it's at a time when the library is not open at all. So I really have no personal objections to this happening, but I, I told Mrs. Gillespie, I'll tell you what I told her, which is I, we have a solicitation policy now, and I have to make you aware of it, and you guys would have to say it's okay.
Okay, with me, how about the sense of the meeting? What do you think, everybody?
It does provide a service to the people who come. You know, sometimes plans can be hard to find. But I do have a problem with not being consistent.
Wait, well, I was just gonna say, if we create this policy, and then immediately we're kind of uh, you know, saying, sure, every, so, if we, it sounds like if we like you and work with you, you can sell here, and that concerns me.
Also, Freddie has not, just, Jane, you can.
It concerns me too, and just informationally, uh, May twentieth um, is the Southborough Gardeners Plant Sale at the Community House, and May twentieth and twenty-first is the Chestnut Hill Farm uh, plant sale and festival. And I agree with what Amy said. I have a problem with it because, because it's redundant and it's, you know, just person-by-person approaches, and we are immediately going against what we, against our policy. Um, and anyway, I personally have a thinking, a thing against it, but that's because I'm a gardener.
Well, on the other hand, you know, the Rotary, we say we work with them, but this, Freddie's group has actually done something for us and created the garden.
Well, we, we found a grant for her, so she could do it for us.
Right, but she did the work. I'm just thinking, if, if that's our standard, then she more than meets it.
Well, Rotary has provided programming in the past. The ballroom dancing we did several years ago, Janet, which I think predated your tenure on the board, so you might not be aware of it, but that Rotary did actually independently fund that program, and there have been a couple of examples of that too. So it would just say, not, I'm a Rotarian, so I think I'm kind of, you know, taken off that hat now and going back to Library Director, but they have assisted directly with some of the things that the library has wanted to offer. So I would say it's kind of the, it's similar.
It's very similar, yeah.
So my thoughts on this, I mean, we, we did the policy. I think the impetus was because we didn't want people to feel like every time they go to the library, they're being hit up for raffle tickets or to purchase something, um, just to, you know, the library is a place that people can go for free and, and enjoy it. So I think part of that was to have the policy in place, just so, you know, every vendor or whoever came in, you know, we'd have a thoughtful policy that we could, you know, at our discretion, um, allow or not allow. I guess I'm not concerned about, um, making two exceptions right away, because it truly is at the discretion of the Board. I also don't think that we should be, um, kind of evaluating anything these groups have done first in the past. I think it's just like, we need to evaluate what the request is right now. Um, like Ryan said, the library is closed. It, um, kind of enhances whatever their event is. I don't particularly have a problem with them selling the milkweed for a couple of dollars, um, because I don't feel like it changes the library in that people won't feel like every time they go, they are being hit up to buy something. So that's just kind of my thought on that.
Yeah, I am, to go back to Jane's point, I'm happy to make Mrs. Gillespie aware of the events, both on Saturday and Sunday with the plants. I mean, it won't help for the Saturday event, right? So hopefully, at least that won't take, I think, anything away from that particular day, right? But at least for the Sunday day to let people aware of the Chestnut Hill Farm um, companion event too, so that if, you know, they want different types of plants, they could go over there. But I, I take your point, Jane, is that we don't want to offer something that would be duplicative, right? With what other people are doing. That's in it, that is, I think, a consideration. But I, I just, I think we, the policy does say that I can make exceptions, but we just passed the policy, right? You guys just approved it, and then we are, it's already coming up. So you see why the policy was important, but I think I agree with everything Kim said. I think that having these discussions is valuable, and then being able to grant exceptions when we think it's permissible is a good thing.
Agreed.
I think it's a reasonable, reasonable exception.
Yeah, I think Kim's points were the most important, when she reminded us why we put the policy in.
Yep.
You know, to not annoy people or to make them feel, you know.
Obligated.
Right.
Well, and also, so we don't become like the place where, you know, it's not obligated, but like, you have to get, I hate going places even to the grocery when there's Girl Scouts and bell ringers, and you can't get through, and you can't get out, and I, that's, I think our goal is to prevent that, which, like you said.
Try not getting your car washed by the cheerleaders, you know? Everybody glaring at you.
Freddie's sale will benefit the entire community with the, um, plants that she sells, and she, I, I agree, we can't judge on what they've done for the library, but nah, I, I, I'm concerned with the, the policy and the, uh, immediate kind of ignore or, uh, voting on it, but I think Kim's, um, wrapped it up well, so I don't, I do not have a problem.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, the policy wasn't meant to say nobody can sell anything here, ever.
It was just putting a policy in place so that there are rules, right? And then, again, I, I think that this. And then again, I, I think that this is a valuable discussion to have. Because sometimes it's difficult for me to determine when it's crossing a line. So like maybe it was really kind of looping you all into it to make sure that this is fitting the library's mission. This is the direction we wanna be going. And again, I think being a, a good community partner. Sometimes means being able to make exceptions when they're, you know, valuable, like, like you said, to the community.
Also, we could also like, do, does the book, does the book sale need permission? I mean, a lot of selling goes on here.
It's a library.
Yeah, we kind of know friends as a particular exception to that, cuz we're also, we're also gonna be selling fudge. Starting next week.
Fundraising for the library, but my only thing would be, be careful with judging the value to the community. Like, I worry about, you know, it's what our opinion of value is may not be everybody, so um.
I take that point, Amy, but you guys are, you guys are the elected authority of the library. So I greatly value all of your judgment, and this discussion was extremely helpful. Um, kind of also segueing well into the community partner discussion. This is around the time that we would be reevaluating and potentially getting in touch with the community. Um, organizer for the Red Cross donation bin. Um, one thing I'll tell you is that she did say we could keep the donation bin longer if we wanted. I will say that the donation bin has been, I think, something people are utilizing very well right now. And I, um, I'm hesitant to kind of say that we should take it away. I think if people are using it and it's providing um. Like additional donations that benefit the Red Cross, it might be a good idea to keep it there for a while longer. But I wanted to check in with you, because I think when we, we talked about this being temporary when it was put in. And we talked about early May as a time to take it away.
Have you confirmed, Ryan, that no one's confused it for the book drop, like no books have been dropped off in there?
I, yeah, I, I am not aware that any books have been returned, Kim, but that is, that's a good thing to check in with the community. Um, volunteer about, no patrons have said I accidentally put books in it. It is, you do have to kind of get high, I think, a little bit to get the clothes in. Um, but the, the bin is clearly marked. I think keeping it in a geographic area that was so far away from the book drops. Has also been beneficial, cuz I don't think that initial confusion happens, but I'm happy to check in on that. I, not that I'm aware of, to answer your question.
Any, any thoughts on the Red Cross bin staying like through the summer?
Easy decision, keep it.
Yeah, and with me.
That's it for the director's report.
Okay.
Sorry, I had a lot, I'm sorry, guys.
No, 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 it's good to keep us, how about the expense report, Ryan?
So you kind of touched on that a little bit, we're, we're definitely spending, at this point, most of the. Um, line items that are not educational supplies have all been allocated. So there is, like, if we don't have the bill yet, we're going to be getting the bill in the next couple weeks. Does that make sense? So um, we're just continuing to spend on materials. You know, the staff is helping me with that, and then there will be a salary. Um, amount at the end that we don't spend. So we do have Mia who's coming from college, she has started back at the library. I think David, maybe a few of the other trustees have seen her this week, she started back Tuesday. So she is helping us spend a little bit of that um extra salary money, which is good. Uh, but that's really cuz we, you know, we're budgeted for more associates than we have, and we had some people depart, we tried to hire new people. We got one when we were trying to get two, so, you know, it's a tough hiring market. I think my plan is to look at hiring somebody in September, so that even a possibility, we might have a little bit of. Surplus again next year, just cuz it's gonna take us a while to get um a new associate in place.
Ryan, are there search firms for library employees, or is it considered too um personally, it should be personally done?
Sorry, say that again, Marguerite?
Are there search firms for library employee placements?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's something called Bibliotems that goes through MLS, we had explored that when um. You know, we had several full-time people out a couple years ago. There's a contract that um we had town council review, that I think we couldn't reconcile. Um, they didn't wanna make changes on the Bibliotems contract, but the lawyer was strongly recommending it, yeah. Uh, we talked about that, I think, at the board meeting at the time, so um. You know, there are websites that kind of cater specifically towards recruitment, including the MBLC. As a whole separate job area on their website, we've had great success in posting the job there. We really have found that basically posting the job notices in the library, that is what we get the most. Feedback off of, so we will probably do that again. My, my hesitancy in trying to do this for the summer is always that people, people's schedule over the summer usually is very. Um, vacation oriented, sometimes people are not here for a week or two. Sometimes the kids are home from school, right? And we are looking for people specifically on nights and weekends, so Kim and I talked about this, Kim Ivors. And we think that if we post in September, when the kids are back at school. People's schedule will have kind of stabilized a little bit, they may be looking for work um at that point. So that, that's a good time, really, to try to do it. We also don't wanna be, to be confused with temporary summer employment, which this position would not be.
Okay, so I guess my question is, um, turning salary money back to the town, is there any other way we can use that salary money? Are there any staff that want extra hours? Can that be accomplished to help out?
I mean, that is being offered to staff right now, but I think everybody is kind of working the maximum amount that they want. Um, you know, we're, we're gonna be starting some, um, we're currently reviewing the nonfiction project. And we're hoping to involve some part-time people with that work over the summer, so that may start early in June. I can tell you, one of our pages who's graduating high school wants to work more, so we're accommodating that. We have Mia back, we're, we're doing our best to try to spend the money. I'm just letting you know that there still will be a pretty significant amount at the end, with, there just was. We just didn't have enough people this year, it's really what it came down to, which you guys know, cuz I think most of the time when you come in, I'm staffing a desk.
Yes.
So that right there tells you that we, we have had trouble getting people staffing a desk, so.
So any other thoughts from the board about uh ways to spend down the salary uh funds that we're gonna return? That maybe would help with the staffing situation at the library?
Seems like Ryan's got it.
It's under control.
All the angles, yeah. Um, what other, did, when you post the job, do you put it in my Southboro as well? Cuz I know the town does it, okay.
Yeah, so, so Beth Mello is very kind to us, she um usually does like an open. I think it's, she tries to do it, I think, once a month, but she does like a job, um, like a job roundup. And show list town positions, so she does do that for the library. We also post the job in the newsletter, which again has helped with the marketing, because that reaches, you know. At a minimum of over four thousand people, so it, you know, we have subscribers who are, you know, even in surrounding towns. So, you know, and then people forward that out to people who they know are looking, so.
It sounds like you've got it covered, I mean, if you've already offered it to the employees that are there, and they're all satisfied with how many hours they're working. What else, where else could you spend it?
Yeah, most of the high school kids who are working now like their schedule and don't wanna work more. That was kind of the feedback we got, so I know, like, I think one or two.
During like, the be, right when they get out of school, is there a project you could throw at them?
No, that's, that's, those are the conversations I've been having, Amy, are when you're out of school, do you wanna work more? And some of them are going away, or they're doing camps over the summer. So if anything, I'm dealing more with the high school kids who want time off. I, again, I think the, the um page who's graduating wants, he's not committing to things over the summer. And he wants to work more, so we're accommodating that. And because he's eighteen and he will have graduated high school, we're also training him on how to help cover the desk. So we're hoping that some of, like, that might help out, and that's something he's very enthusiastic about.
He likes that too, so that's great.
So that is, um, you know, and we're finding that he is um very receptive and very good at what we've um. Had him do so far, so we're gonna continue that.
Great. Okay, it, as, as Jane said, it sounds like you've got it under control, and Janet said it too, and so did everyone else.
As always, under control.
There you go. All right, uh, shall we move on to a very exciting item, which is the. Library facade restoration project preservation restriction, they said it could happen, people. Looks like we've got one in hand. Uh, Janet and Ryan, do you wanna explain what the changes have been and where we are on this?
Well, I think we've got a final written document with just a couple of things that needed to be added, like what book, the title, you know. In the state, the title is listed at, but otherwise, we've agreed on all the language. Um, and Ryan has edited and brought it up to date. And we just need um a few other architectural drawings from the architects to make the attachments complete. If I get that right, Brian?
Yeah.
What we've been waiting for for a long time?
Well, I've integrated what they've sent me so far, but really, they have sort of renderings of the building. And I think what would be helpful is if we could have a rendering done in that software that denotes what's historic. Because I think that's kind of a key piece of what needs to go in the addenda, so I've asked if they could do that. I don't know if they're gonna come back and ask for money for that, they may.
Have you been really specific about what you wanted? You asked if they had anything else, but.
I can be more specific, I was.
I think, I think say exactly what you're waiting for.
Okay.
Be helpful, I think it was a little broad, and you were being, you know, please don't charge me.
Well, that's.
Well, let them charge, I mean.
If, if they need to charge, they need to charge, but say that these are the two things we're missing from the preservation restriction.
Yeah, to Janet's point, I think I have been trying to get it for free, so maybe I have been a little bit too broad strokes. So I, I'm, I'm happy to add that specificity in a follow-up.
Yeah, I think, even if you do that, they may or may not charge us, but, but we need it, so, and that's the holdup, so.
Right, that's.
But we can send that off to the attorneys without that, yes?
To be honest, it's not the only holdup, there's additional addenda in there that I can't do, that we would need, um. I'm not even sure the architect and the OPM can do, I don't know if it's the, it ends up being the lawyer's responsibility to look that up and, and.
For example?
Let me open it. Cuz there's specific subheadings in it, Janet?
Yeah, but remember, she took a boilerplate. Thing, so there might be things in there that aren't required.
Plan of property, legal property description. Detail plan of property, Massachusetts Historical Commission inventory. Those are blank on the form you got, because those are things I can't do.
I think that we should, eh, I think we should go ahead and send it to the attorney, say that we have requested these other drawings. And that we don't know how these other pieces can be completed, or if they're necessary. And you know, that's, cuz we've done, you've done everything you can do.
I feel confident in, in confirming what Janet just said. I don't think there's anything else on my part, other than maybe being a little bit more specific. In requesting architectural renderings that I can do at this point. And you can see from the draft document that I did take the architectural drawings. I thought that best denoted the historic sections of the building, and I put them in there. So I took some of what the architect sent me, and then I tried to package it as best I could.
Yeah, I'd write back to them, and then I'd send something to the lawyer that includes a copy of what you've sent. And then includes those other pieces that you don't know whether are in fact necessary, and whose responsibility would be complete. And that's putting the ball back in their court and washing our hand of it.
These are also billable hours, in my opinion, I mean, it's, 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 they're working, they're on the clock. The firm, you know, they're, they're doing it as part of the job, and if they need more money for that, just, I think, put into CPC for it. Because uh, if, if they're, if they're not doing it because they're not getting paid for it, and I understand that totally. Um, then that's not right, you gotta pay them for their work.
And we also don't want the whole building going under this, so that we are really in trouble.
No, we've been, everything says building facade, we've been very careful on that part.
Oh, I know, but like Brian's, Ryan mentioned it not being like delineated in the uh drawing, so. Just don't, you know, try to cover our rears as best we can, make sure there's no confusion in, in future.
Right, and thank you uh twenty million times over to Ryan and Janet for doing this. How many years, a year and a half?
Or longer.
I got older. I know that.
Been a long, difficult process, we found the right place, that's for so.
How many grandbabies have you had in the meantime, Janet? That's how we can count it.
Just two.
It, it just, it's a matter of if you're looking at the document, cuz I'm looking at it right now. It says the, the top and the bottom of some of the building areas are pink, it's just making the whole thing pink. Like, cuz the whole thing in those drawings is historic, so that's just.
That's what needs to be clarified, right?
Then maybe you could send them a, a more formal request, but then call and say, we just need it pink.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Right, I, one last question, if you're gonna, uh, I mean, this thing looks plenty lawyered already, but uh. Paragraph twenty-one, the assignment, you might just ask lawyers to take a hard look at that. Uh, I, I reread this uh several times, and I just wanna make sure that there's no uh. Uh, there's no circumstance under which uh we, 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 the, we sort of lose control, so. Um, and maybe I'm searching for a problem that isn't there, but uh it's worth just asking them to take an extra look, I think, at paragraph twenty-one.
I, I think we're pretty comfortable in saying, nobody wants this, and it took us this long to find somebody willing to take it. If uh, I, I don't think it's a big competition out there for.
I, I also, I, 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 I'm hesitant to just. Get any pats on the back for this, that it's done, by the way, too, because, you know, Janet, Janet can speak to this too. But we're gonna have to send this to Preservation Worcester for review, and then their lawyers are gonna take a look at it and may have some feedback. You know, there may be groups like the CPC that wanna have input and feedback, and then the Select Board as a group may have feedback. So it's, this is by no means.
The beginning, I know, I know.
It's really just kind of an initial draft on what we can get done on our part. And, and kind of as we noted is, I don't know if there's an additional addenda that need to go in there. I definitely know that there's language that needs to go in on the first page, that like on dates and.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, legalese that I can't, I can't write in, so.
How about a pat on the back for as far as you've gone? But this, as we, as we all know, language in contracts is incredibly important, so.
It was very important for me to fulfill my annual evaluation goal.
That's right.
So that's what I was trying to do.
Here's another, here's another question, does that preservation restriction need to be part of a package? Of applying for a state grant to do an expansion?
Yeah, that, I mean, that'll be a factor in.
Should the state look at it first before?
Well, there's no final form for them to look at, but I, I think Janet and I, in reviewing it. Have made it clear that, that's why we have to really denote the historical section of the building. And then this is actually good to talk about, right? Cuz I, I think we have construction on here anyway, we're kind of segueing a little. But when we do construction, everyone, right? We're, the first thing that we, we would look at is a plan and design for the, for the building, if we renovate the existing building. If we do that, there's an obligation now. Bec- even though this document is pending, even though nothing has been filed and nothing is finalized. That we would keep the historic section of the exterior of the building intact as much as possible. So the, the one exception is the roof, because the roof is an interconnected membrane. And that was, that wasn't historic, we found out when we were putting all this together years ago. Is that um we had to redo that in a modern way, because of, in the eighties, it was redone that way. So um, and that's. and that's the very tippy top of what sits on top of the library. The struts around the building, so what you see from the street level and when you're looking up at the building, all of that is historic too. Right? The parapets, right? I learned a lot of new roof words during um, our C P C. So all of that needs to be maintained um, on the historic facade in a redesign.
So I would, if, if, I would actually, because you've got good connections with libraries that have been renovated and they did have a historic part. Ask those librarians what their experience was with any kind of restriction that they had on their building in terms of applying for an expansion.
Well, I'll say what I've said in previous meetings, which it is somewhat uncommon for public libraries to have any sort of restriction like this on their buildings. Because of the nature of public libraries, they tend to expand and get renovated over time. But there has been a pretty big commitment to trying to preserve the historical facades of buildings. So Amy Yazdani and I actually took a visit to the Woburn Library yesterday morning. And Woburn is a great example. You can kind of Google a picture of them. But they kept the historic section of their building and are actually actively using the interior of that side of the building. And then they have a modernized addition on the right-hand side. Now, personally, I think it's pretty jarring. It's like history on the left. You know, and new modern library on the right. You know, I think what I'm more interested in, just personally, is in trying to find a better balance of having the building from the outside look kind of you know, somewhat similar.
Bolton, Bolton did that. Marlborough's doing that. It looks just like more of the same.
And I think Athol did a better job of, of kind of meeting the new and the old together. So just, I mean, Hopkinton is a good example too. Some of their stuff is more modernized, but I think they fit it architecturally into the building very well. So that would be, I think, a, a challenge for us, but.
So my question would be, are we gonna apply to the state for money and they're gonna say, oh, this preservation restriction has some language in it that means you're not eligible?
No, I asked the question about whether or not we can apply for the um, construction program while we have a preservation restriction pending, and they said that we could.
Okay.
That was specifically asked Marguerite, I think in one of the information sessions. Because I, you know, I talked about the C P C project and how we just redid the, the roof.
Right, right. Okay, just, just making sure we don't run into uh, a swamp further down the road because of uh, something that we, we weren't aware that we needed to be doing. That's all.
It's a good point.
Other, other thoughts? No? Yes? All right, let's move on to the Community Center Exploration Committee update.
Well, just very quickly, I think we didn't, we reported in the last meeting, oh, we, we did report that the letter of intent had been filed, right?
Yeah.
I think I said I had filed it and I found out I filed it wrong. So then I, I did contact the state, the state consultant who then helped me file it correctly. So it was filed on time and we are confirmed to be in the pipeline. As a, as a, you know, potential.
Right.
Construction grant next year.
Excellent. Good.
And then just to close the gap on that, I'm starting to put together a, a public survey that will be very building focused right now. So just, I'm putting together the initial questions. If anybody wants to sit with me, if they have an idea for a question or two um, or wants to pick my brain about it, you guys can reach out to me individually. I'm gonna come back to you even potentially as early as the next meeting with a draft of what the questions are gonna be. So you don't have to take me up on my offer. You can wait until the next meeting, but if you guys want input in what the draft is gonna be, just um, touch base with me one-on-one. I've started to, I would say I have the bones of at least half of the the survey. Now, we're trying to limit it to ten questions. We found if we keep it to ten, people do try to answer all of them. If it goes beyond ten questions, we're gonna lose people. They're just not gonna fill the whole survey. So.
The Survey Monkey, you wanna use?
We're gonna use Survey Monkey and it, there will be some open-ended questions, but there will be some multiple choice. We found that varying it also increases the success rate of people filling it out. The, the um, survey, I don't know that there's gonna be incentivization. Remember, we used to give people um, a break on fines. Uh, we, we are fine-free now, so we can't do that. So I think the last couple of surveys we did, we didn't, um, we didn't give, we were waiving fines anyway because of COVID. So I, I think people will hopefully fill it out. We got a good response rates in the, the previous um, times we did it.
So are, are these surveys also gonna be worked into a strategic plan for the future or?
Yeah, that'll be a factor in our strategic planning update.
So it'll be double duty, in other words.
A little bit, yeah. We're gonna, we might do some breakouts that are more specific to strategic planning questions. So again, that is feedback I'm open to. I think ten questions about the building is a tough thing, but we may avoid asking, uh, we usually ask a lot of programming questions. That might take more of a backseat in the survey draft. Just to let you know, we really wanna ask about the facility itself. And then maybe about some of the services people use, which are interconnected to the building. So there may be like one or two, like, you know, would you attend a music program at the library?
If we had room for it, right? If we had room for it, if we had.
To be honest, a question might be, would you, would you be willing to attend an off-site library program that wasn't held at the library? As silly as the sounds, right? We kind of, we kind of did this with Candidates Night this past time. And we did find that people went there. The, the staff told me they were only aware of two people that showed up to the wrong place. And we did, I posted signs at the entrances. So if you walked in, you'd see the sign and you'd know where it was. Corderville is relatively close to the library, so it wasn't like people were really, I think if they went to the wrong place, they were still able to get to the right place pretty quick.
What was fascinating to me is we didn't have enough room for Candidates Night, so we went to the Senior Center. And during Candidates Night, the seniors complained that they didn't have enough room there for what they wanted to do. It's sort of I, I look at the Senior Center, I think, my God, they have so much space, but of course, they don't really, they, but they certainly have a lot more than we do.
They can do it, they, that open auditorium space that we did Candidates Night in, I think I think the entire board was at Candidates Night, right? As was most of the community. That there that's, we do not have that type of volume of space. That only was available at Corderville. And we had over a hundred people at Candidates Night, so we did need the additional space. So I think that that was, I'm, I'm grateful that you guys let me like coordinate it there. And I'm grateful to the people at Corderville, to John Parent and to, to Pam Lefrancois for helping to make that space available to us. That really helped. And I think if we ever do a big scale event like this again, we have to at least consider that.
I was with you too. They kept complaining about it. I'm thinking you, you have a senior center and it's big. That sounds without senior centers. I don't know, what do they need more space to do? I was curious. Does anyone know? What, what, what is it?
They wanted to, they wanted to have just like exercise programs in the winter and uh, things like dancing and music inside. I, the Northborough Senior Center looks like a palace if you go out there. It's humongous. It has a gift shop.
Has a nice one too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I know.
Who else has a nice one, Jane?
Hopkinton.
Okay.
I've, I've borrowed um, chairs for the shower from them. Is that too much information?
No, I, I've been to the Hopkinton one as well and it is really nice, Jane. I agree.
Okay, shall we move on to the Community Center Exploration Committee update?
Do you wanna go first, Janet? I've been talking a lot.
I, I don't think there's an awful lot to update. Did, did we? Um, cause two weeks ago, before two weeks ago, we'd done the Finn tour. And that's really all we've done. Right, right?
Yeah, we, so in the last meeting, there were, we did kind of have a discussion about the potential of using um, space at um, Finn. If Finn becomes available. And one thing I, I did say I'd be interested in doing, because I, I do feel like you know, geographically in town, Finn is in a very different place than Woodward and doesn't have the same proximity level across the street, right, that Woodward did. So um, there is an existing library space that's in Finn that is relatively small. But if, you know, I am not opposed to the idea of if they wanted to convert and give us that space as a potential annex satellite, we'd probably call it a branch, you know, that that might be um, something that we could have a conversation about. So I did, they were very surprised, I guess, that I.
Shock might be the word.
But again, I'm open to having those conversations and seeing what it's gonna look like. I think a lot of the information, you know, there's a NEARI Building Committee that's doing work there. You know, the Capitol Committee is looking overall at the big picture. There's also gonna be some decisions that have to be made at upcoming town meetings about exactly where all of this is gonna go. So it is hard. I mean, we're also undertaking our own project right now, but we do have to look at a potential secondary site for where the library would be if it wasn't on our existing site as part of our grant, right? I don't know where we would do that, other than perhaps a facility on Route Nine that we would either build from scratch or that we would somehow convert to a library. To me, I don't think anybody is excited about a Route Nine library.
No.
I'm seeing some heads shake right now.
Shaking, shaking, it's like, oh.
One, one other re, good reason to have an annex or another location is that if we do expand the library, we're gonna have to shut down almost all things for some period of time and maybe be in a place on Route Nine or something. So if there was a more local or fuzzy or easier to get to place for some of our patrons, that might be very appealing instead of moving a whole thing out.
But I, but I wanna be clear, I think the initial architect suggestion of moving a specific function or a specific area of the library and then just kind of uprooting that and putting that into another site. I'm not a fan of that. Let's say that to you guys. So the idea of taking our children's room and just putting our children's room in a whole other space. Because again, I think operationally, that's going to be very um, jarring for a patron base. Especially if you would take your kids to one library for books, but then you'd have to go to another library to get museum passes. I just don't think that's gonna work out. So I, I really I like the idea of it as an ancillary space or like Janet's kind of alluding to, we may need a temporary space if we do that. And then maybe we don't move fully out. We, one of the things that we will, I think, be talking about in our public sessions is that the library often buys one, maybe two copies of a bestselling title. Well, if we have an ancillary annex library, that would allow us to purchase additional copies of high-volume books and then make them available at another site. To me, I think that's a very attractive idea. I'll just say that.
The other part of it that, that appeals to me is that if you were reading books, you wouldn't have to toss so many. You could just take it to another site.
And I also like the idea of maybe having an area that is a little bit more secured that does have other people in the building when we're not there and maybe moving the Makerspace equipment in the teen room over to that space. And then that ends up being a more specified program time. Like if we're staffing it specifically to open that area up, we could potentially do programming around the Makerspace technology. So I mean, in Woburn, when we looked at that and when I've looked at every other uh, maker area in the library, it's not just openly part of the teen room. We kind of did that because we had to, because of space reasons. So I, you know, again, there's, there's a lot of ideas that I have if that space were to become available. And again, we might be having to go to a space temporarily anyway. So Janet and I are keeping the lines of communication open. I think recreation in particular is very interested in the Finn space too, if it becomes available. But a lot of that is predicated on, will Finn become available? You know, that's a question right now.
Right. So the, the other part of it is I think Hopkinton moved for a year while they were under construction.
So did Grafton. They were, I think.
Yeah, it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long, a long time. Uh, so that's definitely something to think about. Isn't that part of the, um, of applying for the grant? That you have a space that you can go to?
I know that some of the grant funding can pay, help pay for a temporary space. Know that, because I asked that question.
Yeah, one of the things I just wanted to bring up, just as you were talking about all of this, is um, I think we have to think about what our priority is in terms of um, the renovation. So I think it's very easy since there's the whole, you know, reconfiguration of the community house and like the schools and all of that, to say, okay, if this space became available, what could we put here? And it's like, we're kind of looking at it like Jenga, like all these pieces and which part of our services can be accommodated at certain spots. You know, how can we house, you know, books and not have to weed as aggressively and things like that? But um, I guess we have to think about, or what I think is important to think about is what is the value of having the library in a single spot in terms of serving the community? Cause for at least me as a parent, like with multiple age kids, it's like, I like to be able to go to the library for you know, my own books and also like for the children's room, the teens room. So um, I think I just wanna make sure that we don't discount that part of um, what our library has been. I know it's too small, but as we think about ways to serve um, all of our demographics, like, could we potentially be making it worse by trying to um, you know, put the children's room here, the Makerspace here? And then that also splits up our issues with, with staffing and it makes it less convenient for, for families. Um, so just something I think we should keep in the backs of our minds as we, I feel like we're trying to solve these problems, but then also I wanna be cautious that we don't create other unintended problems in terms of like um, usage and convenience for patrons.
That's maybe a good question for the survey.
And to be honest, there's, yeah, and that's, I might, I might pick your brain, Kim, on some of the questions. There's, I mean, and Kim didn't um, specifically uh, isolate this as a separate issue. But there's a financial component with all of this too that we have to consider, which is that if there I, I just stated earlier in the meeting that we've had trouble staffing desks at the current library site, right? So in an expansion and then even in an ancillary space, we're talking about adding more people who would have to staff those spaces and that costs money. So I just, I, I mean, I think we need to be, we need to be very transparent on that. Because it, we need to make sure it's something people want, I think, before we make the investment. Does that make sense?
This is good we're having this discussion.
Kim is right, is that it's also like services. I think in a renovation, we really want to try to do something that, that we wanna provide services and space based on feedback of what people want, right? And what the current site cannot do. And would, looking at an ancillary space somehow add to that? Or, and again, I don't think, if, if the answer is no, I think that has to be a consideration.
Which only goes to the point of our building is too small. We need more space at our building, I think. But the idea of splitting it off is, it just has too many problems for me.
I think we all agree on that.
Yeah. So good. All right, um, shall we move on to um, the Library Director Evaluation? I just got a text from Amy Yostani that she has to leave the meeting, um, but she's gonna stay on with her phone. Okay. So she will be with us, but via phone rather than laptop. All right, so Library Director Evaluation, my dear friends. Did you all get the copy of the draft, which I sent out this morning at quarter of one?
Yes, thank you, Margaret.
I think I've got everything that I received is, is collated in here, all the comments um, and all the numbers and I averaged the numbers. Uh, now, Ryan, are you staying on for this discussion or are you supposed to absent yourself? What's the, what's the rule?
So I, I muted, um, and I can turn my camera off. And if you want, I, I can do, I'll leave the meeting on, because I'm the host, but if you want me to do other things, I'm happy to do that, but.
Actually, I, to me. Actually, I, uh, to me, we have to decide on your goals and I think we need you for goal deciding.
Okay, do you want me to stay unmuted for this? I'm, I'm happy to do whatever you want, okay.
Okay. All right, so if we all have that, I think the, the actual body of it is fairly cut and dried. It was very mechanical. Everybody's sentences went in, everybody's numbers went in. It got divided by um, five cuz I think Jane didn't have time to do the numbers on most of it, so. Uh, Jane, if you'll forgive us, we can't, we, we arrived at numbers with five rather than six. Um, what I'd like to turn to is the um, page six, which has the goals for the prior year. And then the goals for the next year, maybe we can just sort that out right away. Um, to complete the preservation restriction, well, the target date for completion was the thirtieth of this month. The actual date of completion is. Pending, but due to circumstances beyond your control, basically.
Yeah, I would consider that Ryan's portion of it is, you know, ninety-nine, nine percent done.
Okay. How do we word that? Jan, you're the human resources person. How do you say that? Completed.
It's virtually complete.
Okay, so. All right, that's good. Um. Okay, the next one was to implement regular staff meetings. The goal for completion was the thirtieth of this month. Ryan, where are we on meeting that goal?
I didn't do it.
Well, no, maybe it was not a good goal.
We are, we are planning because the library is gonna be closed.
Yeah.
Um, on the twenty-fourth of this month.
Yeah.
Are planning a staff meeting following the DEI training that day before we open. But I would just say I planned a staff meeting, not regular staff meetings. So I mean, part of this is it's very difficult to get everybody together while also maintaining the library building being open.
You've been short-staffed.
Short-staffed. So shall I say pending due to short staffing?
I would say uh, not completed.
Due to short staffing?
Well, do partially to short-staffing.
Okay.
Should we put it in for goal for next year though, Ryan? I mean, do you think it's important? I think it's important.
I mean, we're trying, I'm trying to get, we've been using email a lot and the staff. Like we, we have sort of a system that where we leave detailed notes for each other. You know, there's good coordination on the desk. So I don't feel like people aren't getting the information they need, but at the same time, I mean. It could go into my goals next year. It is a goal I'm gonna have, whether or not it's in my evaluation or not, is to try to make this happen. So.
See how many others we come up with then, I guess.
I would just say if I could jump in, regular staff meetings, it doesn't say they can't be virtual.
That's true.
Emails. So in a funny way, you've done a workaround. It's hard to get people to leave their jobs, which they wanna get done and go sit in a room with you. But you're doing it. By email conversation.
Or, or to have them come in on technically, like what's their day off. I do think there is some value to having. This, all the staff get together one or two times a year, just cuz I'm sure there are some who couldn't tell you what the other one looked like. Um, but other than that, I think some of that is when you do holiday parties and things like that, but. Other than that, I think, yeah, virtual or like Ryan's doing makes sense. It's hard to get people. You know, I, I know with even my husband, these, his meetings, you can't stop doctoring in a hospital to go to a meeting. Um, or working a service desk. Um, so I think. You gotta find creative workarounds, which apparently he has done.
So could I say virtual and by email?
We try, virtual hasn't really worked cuz we don't get a good turnout from time staff. I mean, one of the things that realistically is probably gonna be the, the outcome of this conversation is. This is what Blackstone does at their library, cuz I talked a lot with Lisa Cheever, who's the director over there. They just simply open later on one day to facilitate a staff meeting. So I was really trying to figure out a way to do this without disrupting public service, but unfortunately I might have. To, I think, is where we're.
So the other part of it.
Can you open earl- can you open early for the meeting? Have a meeting at nine thirty?
The, it's, it, it's based on when the staff is like.
You actually open later to the community, so you don't come in at nine for a, an hour.
And then people get grumpy. So the, the staff meeting was invented before they had email, right, or Zoom. Uh, to me, you're, you're finding a technological way around. I mean, the staff meeting is a, is a, is a thing that. That the public gets annoyed because the building is closed.
Yeah, but how, how many patrons come in right at ten?
Not many. We have few.
Could do that.
So if you picked one day a month or every two months that you would open. That you would ask the staff to come in at nine and if it rolled over into ten, so I don't know, I, I don't think that's a bad idea. And I, whoever said, maybe Amy, it is a good idea to get everyone together. Just once in a while, so you know, you feel more cohesive, you feel more like a group.
And also I wonder, could you use your extra? Sorry, could you use your extra uh, money to fund them coming in an hour early?
Not for the, not for the full-time people. I know Kim's been waiting to talk though for a while, so I'm.
No, I was just gonna say like, uh, wh- what, what do we hope the point is of these meetings? Is it so that they're aware of things going on in the library and it sounds like you've been able to achieve that by. Uh, either a regular email communication or something that's not a physical staff meeting. And I think that that's. Good cuz it keeps them updated and it's something that they can all easily have access to and know what's going on in the library. And then I think separately, I do think there's value as in what others have said to get together. You know, two or three times a year just to lay eyes on each other and I think you've achieved that through. Um, like your holiday get-together. Um, and so maybe it's just finding like. Two or three points in the year where you can find a way to get them together. One could be the DEI training. Um, you know, another holiday party and something else where you have something that. Um, benefits doing it in person and then separately, um. Just address the communication piece via email where you know that the staff is reading it and can be updated that way. Like I think it's um, a waste of everybody's time and it disrupts the public if we close just for you to give them an update of normal. Uh, you know, goings on for the week or the month. So I think if we're gonna try and get them together in person. Make it be for a good reason and maybe don't make those as frequent and then. Um, say that you've fulfilled the communication piece, not by a regular staff meeting, but by another means that's more convenient for you and the staff.
Yeah, to, to that point, Kim, I mean, I would identify that I do not think we need to meet once a week. In this manner, I think that, that, that information can be disseminated. One, one breakout thing that kind of comes up as a repeat is.
Pardon me?
Is museum passes. There tend to need to be coordination, especially if we're moving into a vacation week. I mean, there's particular times of the year that I think it is valuable for me to try to get everybody together. It was this, it was compounded by the fact that every time when we, we did, used to do this on Monday mornings. And people used to come in early to try to go to them and then like somebody would be sick. Uh, or you know, it, it fell on a vacation week and it was just, it was like a nightmare trying to get everybody together. So it's just, we had to resign ourselves to, you know, we're gonna hold the meeting. If the meeting is, is scheduled and we're gonna, we're just gonna have to fill in the person. You know, and that became sort of my responsibility, but I like the idea of maybe going to like a quarterly structure. Like maybe we try to do like a spring staff meeting, a summer staff meeting, because like for summer reading, right? There's stuff that Kim needs to inform everybody as we move into the summer reading season. That's the, the stuff that I don't even know, right? Like if she finalizes everything, it's like where are the, where's the key gonna be held? For this weekly scavenger hunts, like, you know, uh, Kim trying to send out staff-wide emails has been a challenge in the past. Is easier for her to verbally coordinate with everyone. So I think that is a good takeaway. Like maybe it's not even my staff meeting, maybe it's something we, I also have the assistant director help me with. Because there's stuff she needs to communicate. So.
Well, a, a couple of other ideas, you could do something during staff appreciation week. And make it, you know, I mean, the town closes downtown, uh, the townhouse and says we're having a thing. We could do that as well. You could give, you know, a lunchtime during that week or any other time, but I, I'm not opposed to. Announcing that the library is gonna be closed for a staff meeting and letting the community know, I think.
Yeah, as long as, I think as long as it's not information that can be disseminated by email and it's. Like, we'll have an agenda. We use, we tried to do that during the previous staff meeting cycles too. Where it was like specific things and I, I asked the staff what, what we need to talk about. I think that's kind of important cuz it's not just me kind of parroting.
Posing it on them.
What training do you need, stuff like that, the things that, that we can, we need to have a discussion about.
So di- did you ask the staff if they want to have staff meetings?
They do. That's like, that came, that came across in this, it kind of.
In the survey last year.
In the surveys and then they bringing it up in self-evaluations a fair amount. They did it last year and it's coming up again as I'm getting.
So maybe spring, summer, winter, winter and fall meetings would be a good way to do it, so that everybody knew when they were coming?
Yeah.
Quarterly, yeah. Okay, so do you want that as another, people, do we want this for another goal for the coming year? Or is, is it talked out and we can let it go and find another goal?
I think we can let it go.
Yeah, I think, I think so too. Any other uh, thoughts?
Well, I, I guess it's, it's half Ryan's decision, but depends on what else we come up with maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
There's some years you need more goals and some years we have too many, so.
Do we have too many goals? Yes, exactly. A, a workable number. All right, uh, the other one was to develop a technology master list for the staff.
Oh, we did kinda do that. I didn't share with you guys cuz it has passwords, but we have a specific thing that's in the database. I did, I mean, maybe this is a, a management answer, but a lot of this was kind of outsourced. So it was IT helped a little bit with this, with the physical inventory of the computers. And then um, Mariana has kind of helped me start to put together like a master list of all the passwords. So we have to be careful about how we share this information because some of it is. For security, like we don't wanna have everything out there, but I've also sent like sort of detailed email guides. On how to access certain systems. Um. I would say that that goal was achieved. I wanted to kind of, I guess, put everything together in like a binder. And that hasn't, maybe I haven't completely fulfilled it. I haven't done that part.
Well, you haven't done the binder, but you've got the master list and you've got a lot of, of things in the air with that. So I'm just gonna say yes, if anybody. Objects to that, I'm just gonna say.
I can access all the information and I can get it to staff. I would also say like with Jenny. Onboarding new staff with all of the technical things they need to know has been refined and is much easier, if that makes sense. That was, I think, the goal was, it felt like everybody was learning something new. For like the first three months they were on the job and that was feedback I had gotten and we wanted to try to. Minimize that. It's that, I, I, I think I'm cognizant of not overwhelming people. But then it was like I wasn't giving them the necessary information they needed to function properly. That, so it was a balance I wanted to try to strike with not giving them too much, but also giving them everything they needed. And I think I've, I think we have done that. I think if you ask Jenny, she.
Do you have?
She knows how to access.
Sorry, do you have a new hire manual, Ryan?
No, the town.
Might be beneficial.
Yeah, the town is on a handbook now, the personnel board. And then we, we're gonna kind of um, piggyback on that and have a specific um, like section for library employees. But we wanna see what the town handbook covers first and their goal is to do that in the next year.
I was just thinking the like general work requirements or things like that. I remember when I would start a new job, like it would be really nice to. Even if it's a digital handbook to go to rather than having to keep going back to other employees and feeling like an idiot sometimes. Cuz I can't remember whatever somebody told me, so I was just thinking that might be beneficial. It would take some work though.
Yeah. New hire guide. I'm writing it down right now. So that's what I'm gonna call it.
Yes. That's what I'm thinking, yes.
Well, I guess the question is how many new hires do you have in a year and is it, is it worth the amount of time it would take you to do it? And how much will the town new hire manual cover what you're gonna need to cover too?
Well, I mean, a lot of what we, a lot of the onboarding now is kind of showing people the library's website. Because what we've found is that when we onboard people, ninety percent of the questions are answered. Actually, as a takeaway on the website. So it's like, what are the loan periods for items? That's actually listed on the website. What are the different more than books items that we circulate? The Library of Things collection, there's a list on the website that like breaks out with the catalog records. So there's a lot of the questions actually were, we did the work to get all of that up and then. It's right there at their fingertips. It's just that they weren't navigating and doing that. So that's like kind of highlighting the different areas of the website in a way is its own new hire guide. But I take Amy's point. Is it be nice if we handed something to people when they start?
Or at least gave them the URL. Go ahead, David. All right, um, so there we are. I think we have the goals for last year, goals for next year. This is what I have and I think it was what Ryan mentioned to me. One of them was standardize the job descriptions because personnel wants that done anyway. Is that right, Ryan?
Yeah, but it's the biggest for our department. We have seven of them we have to go through and then you, as the board, have to approve them all.
Do you want this to be a goal?
Yeah, it's, I, I think it should be because it's a massive amount of work and then I'm gonna have to also go. To the personnel board meetings to discuss it with them and then there might be a fair amount of back and forth, but they do have to do. I think at least fifty of these, but like a good percentage is just the library.
Oh, that's painful, but is everybody okay with that being a goal for Ryan for next year?
Yep.
Yep, sounds like a need.
All right, and then the other thing I had down for you was uh, surveys and forums for the strategic plan and the building plan.
Okay. The construction program.
Yeah, construction program. Okay, now, do we want a third goal? And if so, what do you think? You said that the, the professional development was not really anything that you felt the need of right now because you'd taken most of the. Um, you'd taken most of the professional development that's available.
Well, there's, there's, I mean, there's always classes that I take and there's Maya trainings that I do with Vanessa. Which helped give the town a, um, there's a tax, I think, a. Financial incentive for the town for me to take those as well, but then um. I mean, I am hoping to attend the New England Library Association Conference next year. So I guess that's a professional development goal, if that works out. I may be a presenter there next year. Um.
Where are they holding it? Uh.
In Springfield.
Dubai, right, okay.
Springfield.
I feel like I had stuff before we were talking about staff meetings and. Um.
Do you wanna revisit the staff meeting goal again?
I mean, we could. I think establishment of the quarterly staff meetings is a. Is a goal I have for myself. I think the new hire guide sounds like a good idea to put together too.
Should it be, maybe we should word it more broadly, like, you know, uh, maximize staff communication. Or something like that instead of making, cuz that would, something that would encompass things other than staff meeting. You know, to encompass all your email systems and. And a new hire.
If I may, Janet, I would add the word enhance, maybe enhance communication. I like to. Uh, you can tell I'm doing evaluations for the staff myself.
Yes.
One other suggestion I have, so Margaret, in, in the goal you mentioned, it mentioned doing um, focus groups and um, surveys. For the strategic plan and the building project. Um, would we benefit from having. Um, one of the goals be to develop some sort of um, public facing. Um, either FAQ or website around the building project. Cuz just as we're going into this, um, you know, I think that there's been. Because just as we're going into this, um, you know, I think that there's been a lot of discussion on it. But I don't feel like we have our, um, I guess, documentation kind of pulled in one place. And, you know, if you think through about how like the gonkplex project went down for the high school, um, which was um, funding for the athletic complex, um, you know, they built a website and um, they needed to have all of the documentation that they can point people to, to kind of defend why they were asking for it, to show that they had done their due diligence in terms of what was included in the project and the costs and things like that. So, um, I guess what I'm saying is I I don't want this to like sneak up on us or to feel like, you know, we have all this information, but we don't have it pulled into a single spot that we could um, use just to be transparent with the town. So I guess I wanted to get everyone's thoughts on, you know, should we consider making that a goal for this year to get us just closer to having um the information that we need to um support and back up a request for a building project?
So that everybody in town knows that the library wants to build and they know why they want to build a long time before we go to town meeting and make a decision about it.
Yeah, and and for us too, as we, um, you know, get more information through the surveys, um, in the focus groups and, you know, show that we're doing that work to inform, you know, what that expansion will be. Um, just to, you know, be transparent and to show that it, you know, we're we're including um, the public as part of this process and that we're not just kind of pulling it out of thin air, um, just making sure that we have um kind of accountability.
Yeah, there, so we're going to be, we're in the process of working with our website vendor now, Kim, to update the content management system, which is going to create a new display of the website, like the whole website is going to be kind of um upgraded, I guess is the right word. So kind of piggybacking, because the town is doing that too. It just coincidentally happened with the library. It's gonna be happening to us too. They're in the process right now of importing the existing website into the new platform. We will have the ability to create new static areas on the website, so we could divest uh um like as we do the surveys and as we start to get in the information, we could start making it publicly accessible pretty quickly, I think, using the website as a vehicle for that. So that's not a bad idea. The the website won't have kind of revolving content anymore. It won't just move when you go to it. What it really, the I think the new thing, especially with ADA, is to make the components like like static. So we can make an area, I think this is a good, because we're gonna get people driven to the website anyway, because it'll be new. And people will wanna, you know, make sure everything they love is still there. And then what else could we add? My big thing was I didn't know what we could kind of feature as a new content piece. And you're kind of giving it to me right now, marketing-wise, is we can say, this will be, we're gonna have an area dedicated to everything that's going on with the library's building as we are putting this together. I love that.
So great idea.
Yes, it it really is. And um we, it's not too soon to start. Um, so that everyone in town says we want our new library expansion. Thank you.
Yeah, I can create the area too pretty quickly and maybe it'll just say, come back here for updates. But then, you know, we can post when it's updates and we can pair that with social media. We can let people know when it's, when it's up. I I will say, just from a goal perspective, the strategic plan needs to be put put together as its own document. And the construction grant will need to be put together in their own document. And both of those things might have to recur in the next evaluation period for me.
Okay, so a strategic plan, when is it, it, when, what is it, every five years?
Yeah.
Okay, and so we're we're due.
It's in, it, that needs to get filed in October if we update it. I think we're good through F Y twenty-four. But it, if we have enough data, we might update it sooner, like we may do it this year, potentially.
Is the updated one considered doing a whole new one, or is it okay to just do an update?
We kind of did, we, we did kind of do an update to the last one. But I would just say so that you can either do one survey or you could just do one focus group and have that be your community piece. We, for the past two strategic plans, have really done both. And I think that that has been valuable, because we maximize the community input we get. I mean, I will have completed those by the um, by October. I'll be able to put something together. It'll probably be in the same basic format. Um, you know, we have like an objectives list, I think, um, in there, which we kind of use for our action plan annually for the M B L C. And then, um, I like to include the raw data. I think it's interesting for people to see the survey information and then to see our notes from the focus groups. To me, the focus group data is always the most interesting. And a lot of what we learned, I say this in the Trotier focus groups, was like that the ki- that manga and anime will bring the kids in. And then we just had thirteen people at our last manga anime club. So that's, it's kind of like from years and years ago, when we asked that question, when we went to Trotier, so.
Okay, so there are a couple of, there are a couple of things. One has to do with establishing better communication or staff meetings. Another um is to develop a public-facing forum to start laying the groundwork for the expansion. And then now the strategic plan, which in a funny way, kind of could be parlayed over into the public uh facing information uh part of the website. I think a lot of the similar data would be, because you're saying you're building focusing it, right? Am I right?
Yeah, I mean, but we've had building outcomes in in the last two strategic plans as well. But I think you'll see a lot more of it in this one. A lot of the data from the previous strategic plans are like directly things people want that would require us to be bigger, like more books comes up consistently. There was that one comment where the person wanted us to have a gym that Kim Ira likes to bring up. Um, you know, uh, music programs, I think, pretty consistently come up. And then it's like different areas that you would want in a library, you know, bigger children's room, bigger teen room. Um, local history room came up a couple times, and you guys know I bring that up, because I love that idea. So, um, I I think, I think you'll see that a lot of the previous strategic planning data has directly, it's gonna be a lot of what influences our questions for the building project. And then a lot of it will be building focused as a result, because that's what we're trying to plan for, right?
Right, and and I I, gosh, I think that the strategic plan uh information and the public-facing uh information will kind of use the same material, but it's really two kind, two different goals. So, um, fellow board. Do you want four goals or do we want?
We, we did like teens and seniors as an underserved population. That was an outcome of the last strategic plan. I'll tell you, I think in the last five years, we've done a really good job with teens, right? Whether or not we're doing programs that, like, a bunch of them are coming to, right? Sometimes we only have two or three. That's still way more progress than we had before. Seniors, I think, are something definitely we'd wanna address in the new strategic plan. Seniors come in to utilize books. They're not coming in to utilize programs. Maybe that's because the senior center's meeting all of the programming needs, but maybe they're not. Maybe there are things that could draw seniors in, and maybe that should be an outcome, I think. That's, those are questions I'm interested for the strategic plan. So we're planning on going to both the dull men's club and the exciting women's club. I think last year's strategic plan was just the women's club, because that was the only one.
I, the Northborough Senior Center has a little library in it. And I don't know if it's their individual library or whether it's connected to their town library. And it's not a lot. It's like a couple walls, but if I'm remembering correctly.
Senior center, you, they can get books and they can get DVDs. The, most of the books are discards from us. Go over there and look at the collection.
This is very green, we're recycling. So, um, what do we want? Do we want to give, uh, you, Ryan, one more goal or two more goals?
Well, why not, why not split them up so that, um?
Okay.
You know, if one's achieved and not the other, it doesn't.
All right, that sounds good. How strategic plan, uh, updating the strategic plan for one of the goals? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so that's gonna be goal number three. Strategic plan. And oops, what do we want for goal number four? That could be the, that could be the uh forward-facing public information about the approaching building project? Do you think that would work?
Yeah, why not?
All right, let's do that. All good ideas. All right, uh, I will type those up and I think we are done.
Are, will you resend it?
Yes. I will. I have to say that this form was so difficult. I don't know what it was, um, but people would send it to me, there'd be nothing in it. Um, I'd type up parts of it, chunks would disappear. I don't know whether the the software's changed or what, but um, never have I had so much trouble getting a, getting a form done. I think everybody ended up um printing it out and either leaving it in my mailbox or I picked it up from them, which is sort of not the way to get this done, but there it is.
Imagine doing that for twenty library employees.
Yeah, you've got a lot, a long job on that. Okay, so are those, are those four goals good with you, Ryan? All right, good. All right, now our next section is, do we have to vote to ex- ne- accept the uh evaluation? Or we just do it?
I, I think you need a completely completed one.
All right.
Hey, so I think you should type out, I mean, I, I, I don't know how the, I can't speak to this, because it's up to the board. But you guys should vote. I think it has to be part of the packet materials too. So maybe in June, at the June meeting, you should include a finalized evaluation form. And then everybody should vote on it then.
Okay, now you have to put, you have to enter some content.
Yeah, I can, I can, as soon as I get a revised draft, I can get you all of that.
Okay, so what, I'll do the revised draft this after. Go ahead, David, what were you gonna say? Sorry. All right, I will do the revised draft this afternoon and I will send it out to everybody, including you, Ryan. And then I think we are sort of good. All right, any other business that shall properly come before our board? Oh, public comment. I don't see anybody.
Yep.
No public, all right. Part of public. Okay, so any other business that shall properly come before the board? Okay, I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, okay, so. Okay, uh, uh, who did it last time? We'll reverse you. All right, Amy will move.
I wasn't there.
Janet will second. How's that?
Okay, that's fine.
I moved that we adjourned the meeting.
Okay, all those in favor, Landry, aye. Mr. Eckberg?
Aye.
Ms. Maney?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Regan?
Aye.
And Ms. Yas Dani?
Aye.
All righty, we are now officially adjourned and it is twelve forty-six.
Oh, when's our next meeting?
Oh, next meeting, mm, good question.
You wanna do it, um, I'm looking at the June calendar right now. You guys wanna do it this sixteenth?
No, I don't wanna do it.
I can't make that date.
I can't make that.
The ninth?
Okay, good.
Janet? The ninth, okay? You're looking at your calendar?
Yep.
All righty, good. Okay, the the next one, meeting will be at eleven A M on Friday, June ninth. All right, good. All right, everybody.
Have a great Memorial Day weekend.
Yes, have a nice Mother's Day.
Oh, happy Mother's Day. Can't say that, but happy Mother's Day to Mrs. David, so. Marguerite, the ninth is better for the personnel board too, to get them the completed evaluation. So that's actually, they'll like that. I think the sixteenth is their due date.
Oh, oh, okay.
Anything we can do to make life better?
Okay, everybody. Have a good weekend. Bye.
Happy Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day.